Okay, so this is Sarah Wolf calling to order the virtual February 2nd meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee. Happy Groundhog Day. Welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight. Thank you to 1623 Studios for posting the meeting for us. We will begin with public comment. Just a reminder to put your full name and your town in the chat if you would like to make a comment. We ask you to limit your comments to about three minutes and I'll ring my bell after two and a half and after the comment is over, the chat function will be turned off. So is there anybody here who would like to put a... Andrew Burnett is there. Mr. Burnett, go ahead, please.
Hi, just unmuted. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome, thanks, Sarah. Hello, everyone. I'm a second grade teacher at Essex Elementary and here on behalf of the Manchester Essex Teachers Association to voice our concerns about the premature full return to schools that is currently being proposed at the elementary level. MITA stands behind the Kita 5 teachers and their concern about the aggressive return to Kita 2 full in-person plan, which ignores the tenacity of the virus at a time when our teachers are not yet vaccinated. No proof that the system we've been using has not led to spread in the community. We simply do not know much about asymptomatic transmission in our school, sports, and other school-related activities. It is not prudent to continue to roll the dice with staff, student, and community safety. It would be invaluable for Kita 5 to be included in pool testing to allay legitimate fears about potential COVID transmission. Elementary teachers have been in school with students since mid-October despite the continued absence of any COVID testing plan. While we appreciate the aims of the Medbot system, it relies too heavily on self-reporting and is only part of a comprehensive program that should also include testing. Cases in Manchester have continued to be high since students have returned to the elementary school. With this in mind, teachers feel that Kita 5 testing, six-foot distancing, and staff vaccinations should all be in place before we consider a return to full in-person learning. With new, even more contagious COVID variants rapidly spreading and the CDC warning that there will be a greater problem come March, now is not the time to ease up on our vigilance. Safe distancing remains challenging in rooms full of small children. A lot of parents thought they would send their kids back in person, but many have found remote learning has worked better for them for a variety of reasons. Full in-person would mean that the district expects all children to come back into the building, but this doesn't necessarily work for all families. The two weeks following February vacation are a dangerous time to increase the number of people in the building. It is certainly not the time to reduce the currently agreed-upon six-foot distancing guidelines. Many families will travel during February vacation. Does any RSD really have the ability to properly track and enforce post-traveling quarantining requirements? So many of you have had kids go through elementary school and you know your teachers have shown love and true dedication to your kids. All teachers are asking for is to come back when it is safe, which will be in the next months, but certainly not in February. Many excellent teachers have been forced to take unpaid leave for their own health and safety despite their willingness and dedication to continue working. As a result, many support staff are being asked to leave their positions and act as subs. Choosing to go full in-person will lead to more dedicated teachers needing to go on unpaid leave thereby reducing the quality of our students' education. Sending more students into the building right before vaccinations are available is not a risk we should take. Although we're in complete agreement about the eventual full return of our students to the buildings, we do not agree with your proposed timeline. Fully vaccinating teachers is the only way to ensure the safety of our staff and community, and we ask for your commitment and patience until that outcome is realized. Thank you.
Sorry, I realized I was muted. Thank you, Mr. Burnett. And next up, we have Kate Cox on Quest.
Hi, Sarah. I wanted to speak tonight because I see that the expansion of in-person learning at the elementary level is on the agenda. I supported our decision to go hybrid once we had safety measures in place, and I have been blown away by how effectively teachers have delivered synchronous hybrid instruction. This was an enormous ask, and I feel it's one that they handled with so much patience and professionalism. As we consider sending elementary students back to school for longer periods, I think that we need to look at the bigger picture. For starters, our youngest learners have unique learning needs that are best met in the classroom. The skills that they are still perfecting, from simple things like letter formation to foundational skills like discerning similar phonograms to lifelong skills like organizing their materials, these are all skills that need to be taught and reinforced face-to-face with their teachers. At the same time, though, I think it's really important that we note that our youngest learners are not the only students who should be prioritized for more time in the building. I listened to our elementary principals last week discuss benchmark assessments and share that widespread learning loss is not evident through them, but I really believe that this is a case of the rich getting richer and the poor getting poorer. I can see this even in my own home where I have one independent learner who manages remote learning with ease and has continued to succeed academically. He is fine to wait his turn at home. I also have one struggling learner who is about half a year behind when our schools closed last year and is now almost two years behind for his age. This is not for lack of every effort on the part of his teachers who have extended every support that they can and more for him. They've met with him for walks during the spring and summer. They've added extra support services and eventually placed him on an IEP, but still it is not enough and he continues to fall further behind. Prioritizing our youngest learners is a start, but I urge the school committee to think critically about what other groups of students need to be in school. Our special education population is suffering disproportionately. These are the kids who are already behind and the gap is widening. The same is true of students with food insecurity at home and those who are chronically absent from remote learning. Please consider taking a broader perspective and giving teachers and principals the ability to identify additional students at all grade levels who should be in school more so that we take the effort to close learning gaps before they increase even more. Thank you.
You okay? Do you need to get cleaned tonight? Yeah, you do.
I'm done. That's not me, still speaking.
Sarah, you're on. You're still muted. Oh, my God. Bernie, you are up. Thank you. Thank you, Kate, for your comments.
Great, thank you, Sarah. I'm happy to see that the school committee will be discussing the elementary hybrid in-person time expansion proposal tonight. I recommend that the school committee revisit their initial decision to enforce a six-foot social distance rule rather than the three-foot permitted by this Department of Early and Secondary Education. Since reopening our schools, the six-foot rule has presented a recurrent barrier to further in-person education. This decision has given us time to allow teachers, students, and families to practice the government-recommended hygiene practices that in fact lead to safe in-person schooling. Academics aside, the social and emotional toll that remote learning has taken on the entire student body cannot remain unrecognized. Students and families deserve the right to make a decision to return to in-person schooling to the extent their household is comfortable doing so. Manchester Essex remains the vast exception to many local schools who have returned to a large degree of in-person learning. I have personally been working inside of a very large school since July, and we similarly see no in-person school spread. Now that the systems are in place, the district has had a chance to observe that there has not been in-school transmission of COVID-19. I am hopeful the school committee votes tonight in favor of adding additional in-person days to the elementary school schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. And I remembered to unmute that time, so that was exciting. Okay, next, we have Allison St. Marie.
Hi, thanks for listening to me. So I'm a parent of a memorial student who's in first grade and as well as a sixth grader. I've been very pleased with the hybrid education that a first grader has gotten, although she's definitely... We're desperate to get her in-person more days. But my concern tonight is really about the middle and high school students. I am a pediatrician at Beverly Hospital. I spend a lot of time in the emergency room there. I'm seeing a staggering amount of mental illness in adolescents and tweens. And, you know, while I'm encouraged that the elementary students are looking, you know, it's looking like they're going to be getting more in-person time, I think we need to simultaneously be figuring out how to get the middle school students back and really thinking about, you know, once our teachers are vaccinated, which thankfully won't be too long from now, you know, just making it a priority that these kids absolutely need to be back full-time in-person with, you know, of course, leaving an option for remote for families that may have health concerns or, you know, grandparents or whatever it may be. But, you know, I think we need to be thinking now about the spring when the weather's nicer and allowing for outdoor spaces and additionally planning six months ahead for the fall because I don't see there being, you know, a hard stop to this virus. I think it's going to be lingering in waves for a long time to come, and we need to figure out how to prioritize the needs of our students. Sort of in addition to planning for the time when the teachers are vaccinated, I wanted to... for everyone to consider, I know in the middle school there are spaces for in-person time that are not necessarily being utilized because of families that are opting out, and I'm hoping we can think creatively about maximizing time for the families that do want in-person for their students. So those are my main points. Thank you.
Sarah, this is Ken Warnock. Sarah may still be muted, and I'd just ask everybody else that's on the call, please just make sure to keep yourself muted.
I'm usually so good at this. Okay, yes. Do we have anyone on the phone who would like to make a comment? Okay, nobody calling in who would like to make a comment. I have one comment that was sent to me ahead of time in a letter from Tina Lane of Essex. Ms. Lane has requested that we provide more detailed descriptions of the programs that might be cut and a breakdown of the costs for each to improve transparency and inform taxpayers of the consequences of a reduced budget increase. So her letter was much longer, but the full text will be posted with the minutes from this meeting. We will be discussing some of these budget issues tonight, and we will continue to fine-tune our budget throughout the spring, so I don't think we can have a full accounting of what may or may not be cut, but we always do our best to remain transparent as... to be as transparent as possible in the budget. All right, so student report. I know that you're here.
Yep, so we were remote today because of the snowstorm, but we'll be returning hybrid tomorrow and to our normal schedule. And so kind of just based on all the feedback that I got from my classmates and from other students last week, seems that hybrid's been running fairly smoothly, I love to say, which is good, but the safety of the conditions still remain a concern, of course. And so aside from that, February break is coming up for students, which is really exciting. Next week is the last week before that vacation, so students will have a week, the 15th, off. And so between now and the next time we meet, which I think is the first Tuesday of March, I'll just be collecting more feedback from students and getting their input. So by our next meeting, I should have a more solid update in terms of how hybrid is going because by our next meeting, it'll be well over a month since we started hybrid. So it'll be good to see how things are going by then. So yeah, that's all I have for today.
That's awesome, Lucas. I have a question for you because I heard that at the high school, everybody's starting to choose their classes for next year. Are you going through that decision process now?
I am, yeah. I'm starting. I think a few of our teachers mentioned that today. I haven't actually picked any of my classes yet, but I think I'll be doing that soon. Yeah.
All right, good. That's an exciting time.
It is, yeah.
Does anyone else on school committee have a question for Lucas?
I just threw something in the chat. This is Annie. What are the safety concerns that students have? I apologize for not recalling what those were from last meeting.
I haven't really... I haven't really heard any, like, safety concerns from students, but I assume that, you know, they do have concerns. And, you know, just like not only the students, but I think, you know, the teachers definitely do have concerns about safety as well. By our next meeting, I think I will be sure to ask some of my classmates and students in terms of, you know, what specifically they're concerned about in terms of safety.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucas. Anyone else? Okay. So my report is very short. I just wanted to thank you for joining us tonight. We have some very interesting business on our agenda, which probably is why we have 125 people participating tonight. So welcome to everybody. We will... So including a proposal for expanding some of our in-person programs at the elementary level, we will also be discussing and adopting a budget for next year. I hope that you will stick around for the budget discussion because the decisions that we make tonight have long-term implications for the budget and the educational program in the next few years. Our budget goal is to manage the district's budget and budget reserves, allocating resources for both the near-term and long-term financial health of the district. So thank you again, everyone, so much for your time. Whether you are a student, parent, or guardian, teacher, or administrator, your contribution to the school is extremely important. And while we may not agree on every issue, we can all agree that we want the children to have the best possible education we can provide with the resources that we have. And now we will move ahead with our meeting, beginning with the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion of the consent agenda?
Avi, can you just tell us, is it 24K or what is the... the amount? I thought there were two... Is it two or one invoice from the... Is it Axios? Axis? Is Avi there?
Annie, it's...
Oh, he's muted.
All right, I was just talking...
The issue tonight.
I'm taking after Sarah. Sorry, just kidding, Sarah. Yeah, there were two invoices. It's voucher 1033, by the way. There were two invoices from Axis Computing Networks, which has been our up-sourced partner during COVID, and one related to the continuation that we've been having of a mixture of parent help desk and boots-on-the-ground. And then the other one was related to the transition that we've had in the temporary phase while Steve Quietek has gone to normal at public schools.
So that was the total of 48? Is that... What was the total? Sorry.
That's right. Yes, it was 44.
Great. And in the future, can we plan on having an update on what we're going to do about the Steve Quietek plan, you know?
I thought we already did.
Are we hiring a person?
Avi, why don't you give her the update that we did a couple of weeks ago? Just the brief version?
Brief version is that we have been using Axis Computing Networks out of Newburyport that's done this type of work in other districts to help us just kind of maintain stability during the transition while we can also do an evaluation of where we're trying to go and what we're trying to do. We happen to have, you know, a bunch of different pieces in play with technology needs significantly growing over the past several years and also having, I would say, for reasons everyone knows, a much greater-than-normal technology or with remote learning. So we're using their expertise to help us kind of assess what's current, what's continuing, and a good FTE plan amongst all the different components of what we need, which spans backend infrastructure, assistance in the buildings. We already have technology integration, folks who help on the curriculum side, and planning as well. So we expect to be going through that process over the next couple of weeks and hopefully be wrapping that process up this spring. And you may remember that we used some of the planned restructuring to allow for a position that we've always had, kind of buried in the Steve Quietek role for data administration, including Aspen and Aspen Management Student Information System and State Reporting and all that comes with that. So if I'm missing anything, Pam, feel free to add on.
Okay. So do we have any more conversation on the acceptance of the warrants or the minutes? Did we get this?
I need the voucher number, please.
Voucher number, please, Avi?
033.
All right. All in favor of passing the consent agenda? Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yeah, yes, sorry.
Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes, Ken.
And I'm a yes for the consent agenda. Thank you, everybody. All right. Subcommittee reports. It looks like we have no report from anybody but negotiations. Is that true? Yes? Okay. I mean, we did just have a big meeting last week, so... The negotiation team continues to meet with the MITA leadership on a regular basis, and we enjoy meeting with them and working with them. What do we have next? And Pam, I turn it over to you for your hybrid transition indicators monthly report.
Thank you. And if you... Anybody who's been catching my video, I've been frantically trying to save a file, so I just had a major file error and my entire PowerPoint went into gibberish. I do have an older version that I'm going to use, so forgive me because I think we have a few little... It may not be the most up-to-date and may have a few little typos throughout, so we're going to go... We're going to live dangerously here. The bulk of it hasn't changed, and this should be up-to-date to cover the important things. So we agreed at the beginning of the year that every month, at the first meeting of every month, we would provide a hybrid indicator report. The hybrid indicators were established as a way to gauge when we would be ready to entertain going back to hybrid learning. And we, beginning in October, we reported every month since then. So the first topic or the first metric that we look at is the COVID metrics. Happy to report, there's still no evidence of in-school spread identified. Essex remains in yellow, Manchester in red. We can jump to the map, which just shows... This is... Maps are published on Thursday. That's why there's a 1/28 date stamp on this. Most of the North Shore still remains in red with some communities turning in and out of yellow. We have the Cape Ann League represented here in the right-hand column. We also have a few other communities highlighted with an asterisk. They are either a neighboring community, so they're... We share a border and/or we participate in co-op sports with them, so we have an ongoing relationship. So the Cape Ann League remains in a blended red-yellow. I did note that several communities moved off the red and into the yellow this week, but that remains a status quo. I think it's worth saying, we've said from the beginning, the map was to be taken in conjunction with other things. Right now, the standard DESI recommendation is that red itself doesn't change you from an in-school to an out-of-school mode. It's really whether or not you have in-school spread. So how do we determine in-school spread? The nurses do a fantastic job of contact tracing and keeping a record of how many positive cases we have, and the spread is determined by how many contacts result from those positive cases. So I think I reported last week and can report again this week. Well, we do have some cases, and the chart basically shows you today's February 2nd report, so it's measuring January 5th, February 2nd. And then you have our reports on the 5th of January, the 1st of December. The December report took into account the half of, well, basically October and November together. To date, we've had, you know, about 22 cases between students and staff, primarily staff. And of those cases, we are able through contact tracing to show that most of all of them have been external issues with external contacts. So no one who has contracted COVID has resulted in having any in-school contacts, either student-to-student, staff-to-student, or staff-to-staff, except for one staff having a contact, close contact with another staff member. That's the only one this month. There have been a few others. So again, if we look at this chart in total, over the time that we've been tracking the data, what we see is more staff than students coming up reporting in as positive. And among those that are positive, only external close contacts are identified, no in-school contact-to-contact transmission, which leads us to believe that we do not currently have any problem with in-school transmission. I did send a note today that was a little different from notes sent in the past, different because we were reporting a multiple. And when we have multiples, I think there's concern of clustering, and we just wanted to give enough information in that because we are very limited in what we can share that the clustering... There is no clustering occurring in school, and there is no transmission in school. Those positives have actually been out of the building seven days or more, and there have been no resulting in-school contacts. So while a number of three students at once can sound alarming, we have been able to trace it back again, the excellent work of our nurse team in conjunction with Departments of Health, that it is all an external matter, so there is no spread in school. So we remain confident about the COVID metrics. Testing was raised earlier. We are moving along with testing. We're, as I reported last meeting, we are teaming with DESI. Late last night, we heard that we were going to be paired with Ginkgo as our testing partner, which is great news because our team has been working with Ginkgo since December. If you recall, we were pursuing a relationship with them to go out on our own with the testing through our research around consent and liability. Our attorneys and the Department of Ed recommended that we go in with them because they had done all of the pre-work with the companies that was necessary, so that was a time and cost savings to us. We are working hard to make this available the week after vacation. Logistics and the medical needs are being dealt with by our nurse team, and we're just waiting for Ginkgo to contact us and give us our next level paperwork, which will include introductory letters for families and staff as well as consent forms. We need all of those pieces in place before we begin the process. So that's exciting, and keep that in the yellow because it's a work in progress. And then finally, staffing, I would say, principals are reporting the ongoing challenge is just to maintain the substitute pool, but I think as reported last week, everyone is set with their proper coverage. The program is being offered. I think we, you know, we know it's taking longer than typical, so the pace may be different, a little bit slower than in a typical year, but we are still working through our traditional curriculum. And then the budget, we are currently assessing the financial implications of the second round of hiring to open up the middle high school in hybrid, and we're estimating that it's going to come in right between 250 and 300. Now that we're hopefully finalizing an adopted budget tonight, we'll be able to free up the same folks who are working on that to run those numbers for us. So overall, the indicator report is a positive one. Nothing has changed substantially since last meeting. A couple of... What was on my updated slide but didn't make it onto this one is related to hybrid transition, but indirectly, is I did get a report out of the high school that the MIAA has approved football for Fall 2, which is scheduled to begin sometime after February vacation, but potentially before our next school committee meeting. Going back to the rules and regs that were set out in the fall, technically, if we are in hybrid, we are cleared to play without any school committee action. Because we've been involved, the school committee, in the decision-making to this point, you are certainly welcome to retain your right to weigh in on it. If you'd like it to be considered, we could... I could talk with the team to delay the start, but I think it's... They're going to try to get up and running for registration as soon as the end of this week. Well, let me give you a couple more updates, then we can revisit. I think it was mentioned in Andrew's open...
Quick question on the athletics, very quickly?
Yep.
Quick question on the track. I think track was also slated as Fall 2 along with football. Was there any determination on that? I think it was supposed to be outdoor.
I only receive reporting on football.
Okay.
Unfortunately. Happy to go back and do some more homework, but I had mentioned to both Jordan and Tricia that I would mention it tonight to see if there were any initial concerns. I think what they like to be able to do is to at least take registrations and get prepared and then see how it falls out. I don't know that any other season actually started right on time. So we could, you know, between weather. When they made the decision, we didn't have, you know, 17 inches of snow on every field, you know, on the North Shore. So I would say let's take this with a grain of salt, but wanted to give you the update that they are preparing for.
I have a quick question, Pam. Is it, it's outside, correct?
Yep.
And that's it. That's good.
Yeah, I'm going to be honest, I have not read through all of the new regulations of how they're going to restructure their play to meet the guidelines. I just know that they, that MIAA has approved and put out their beginning of the season documents on it. And I guess what I'd like to take away is if there are significant reservations, that football is somehow, you know, needs to be considered differently than we have other athletics. I can certainly report that and we can, we can come back with more information before they go forward. If we're at the point where we approve the initial fall season, then we approve basketball and we feel like we're in hybrid now, you know, let's just let this play out. We're fine getting those registrations going and just moving forward.
So the problems we've had with athletic infection has basically been from hockey, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I needed to know. Thanks.
I would say I think Jordan's been doing a really good job of managing all of our teams and our sports and keeping everybody following not only the MIA rules, but our more strict rules when we have them. So I'm inclined, now that we're in hybrid, to let the rules stand, but I'm welcome to hear from anybody else who wants to weigh in.
And I'd say, you know, I should revisit the positives that get highlighted, which is, it's a good opportunity for students to have an outlet outside the home and other than academics. It's, it's good for the social emotional well-being. Our, our students have been very good with compliance to the rules and regulations. The previous seasons have gone well, and we have not had any onsite issue, onsite athletics issues with infection.
Sarah, can we just make a quick call out to anybody on a cell phone to just please double-check your cell phone? I think we've got a couple of cell phones that are muted and we're hearing kids-
We do, it's embarrassing. We can hear your children and your dishes, so if you're on your cell phone, please double-check and make sure that it's muted.
So all school committee members, just a heads up, I'm going to hit mute all, which means you're going to have to unmute your cell phone if you want to talk again.
Good to know. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Pam. All right, then I think we can move on. I think we're good.
So what is next? What did we have scheduled next on the agenda?
The big exciting news that you wanted to talk about.
Okay, so I'm going to go right back to my report because I think, I'm hoping this version has it in. It does. Yay. Okay. So again, this is a good timing for it because we just talked about the indicators and the condition that the schools are in. And again, the great work that the nurse team has been doing, and the DPH has been doing to stay on top of things. What we wanted to bring you tonight is a proposal to increase in-person time at school for the early elementary students. And the reason why we're bringing this to you now is in part because I think our entire process has been phased throughout the year. So we, you know, we hit our first benchmark of getting kids back into hybrid, then we did the heavier lift of bringing the middle high school back. And while that was happening, I know Jennifer and John, our elementary principals, were kind of examining their program and looking for ways to improve it or maybe to increase offerings. So, you know, we, they engage with Jason Waldron and the Facilities Department deserves a huge shout-out because they have been doing incredible behind-the-scenes work to make this, make sure the schools can handle what we're doing. The three of them went through and performed another space assessment. So similar to what we did in the summer on a smaller scale to see if there was a way to address the growing concern that our youngest students struggle with remote, with the remote learning model. And I think that's a fairly widely accepted concept that our K2 kids, the younger you are, the harder it is for you to get real meaning out of their remote experience. That being said, our teachers are doing a fantastic job. Our kids and families are doing great at learning the new ropes and making best use of the process. But I think the early educators, as reported by the principals, see an opportunity to bring the kids back, and that's what they did a deep study on. So what they learned in their space assessment was that they could return the K2 students to in-person learning under the current social distancing safety guidelines. So staying at six feet, all our mitigation efforts still in place with some, and I'll get into the how we're going to do it in a second. We, we can bring them back, and both elementary schools can reconfigure where they're at now to achieve it. And I think it's worth just noting, both elementary schools are in different places with space. The size of the classrooms at Memorial and the extra space that they had this year allowed them to do things a little bit differently than Essex. But right now, we could, after February break, we believe, give the facilities team enough time to reconfigure the buildings to make this happen. So here's a, here's a snapshot of what it looks like. It would be K2 coming back four days a week at six feet. So Remote Monday would stay in place. Students would be onsite Tuesday to Friday for a full day in person. And we would maintain the high flex model for students who need to remain at home. It would allow for students who have chosen remote only up to this point to return when families choose, when conditions in that home allow for. And the caveat is, it assumes all students who have elected homeschool for the year remain in that mode through spring of '21 and not return to school until the fall of '21 with the new school year. We would not have enough space if all homeschool students elected to come back. So the facilities work to be done is not small, but it's not insurmountable. We're going to need to move four classrooms at Essex, so do a grade-level swap. That's because the class size at one grade level is larger and they're in a smaller classroom than the K students. So I believe it's K1 that will be flipping so that we can get more square footage for the larger group and put the smaller group in the smaller square footage room. In both buildings, we'd have to reconfigure the cafeterias to accommodate for the additional students that would be in there to keep them at six feet. So that's everything from removing things that were stored in those spaces. At Memorial, they're going to need to open up the wooden doors and reclaim half of the gym and integrate that into the cafeteria for additional seating. They need to find store, you know, just kind of very everyday things, but we need to find storage for everything that's in there now. So the team is going to need that February break to just physically reorganize the space. They're working on identifying either purchasing or finding additional desks so we can have enough seats in that, in the cafeterias for students to sit at six feet apart. So again, it's not like we can just flip the switch and tomorrow do this. There is some elbow grease that needs to go into making the building ready for this to happen, and that's why we've targeted post-February break, that it seems to be, Jason feels like it's a reasonable timeline. It gives them kind of run of the building to do the work that's necessary. While that's happening, we'll be reconfiguring the bus routes to account for the fact that we'll have more riders on a given day. And this will be disruptive for some, from teachers and to assist with that, we're proposing that Friday, 2/12 is an asynchronous, asynchronous day for K1 at Essex only. That's where the room flipping will have to take place. And then on Monday, 2/22, we would ask for an asynchronous day for K2 in both buildings, so that when teachers return from break, they can reorganize their room. Because even though Memorial is okay on swapping rooms, we have the staff, the custodial staff, the maintenance staff needs to get in there and reorganize all of the tech setups or where they're located in the room and the desks. And I think the teachers are going to need some time to put that back together when they return from break. So that's the proposal on K2. And I know, we've kind of known from the outset that that's great for K2, if you're, you know, if you're inclined to want your kids back in for four days, but it will, it begs the question, what about grades three, five? And the reality here is just simply we don't have enough space to return grades three to five at six foot social distancing. The combination of the class sizes and the square footage of the classrooms just doesn't, simply does not allow us to bring all of those students back into the building. At one point, we're even looking at constructing temporary classroom spaces out of the library at Essex Elementary. That would have pushed our timeline up to late April for all students, but on deeper review, we couldn't get square footage for two classrooms out of it, only one. So really, what we're looking at for grades three to five to bring them back more days a week on a similar schedule to K2, we can't do that until there's an adjustment in social distancing. And we know we can't adjust social distancing until the conditions are safe to do so. So I think the way we see it at this point is there are two separate decision points. One, tonight, I think we're prepared and ready to execute is the K2 return model. What we're not prepared to do is offer you anything to consider around changing social distancing. And a lot of the reasons why I came up in some of the public comment. I think up to this point, our health team, which has been our nurses, our school doctor, reps from the depart, the Boards of Health, and then our town liaisons have not seen the need to do testing of elementary students. But we weren't talking about bringing back students either. So I think we could revisit student testing at K5. There is some discussion about potential revisions of CDC guidelines that are more aligned to the DESI guidelines that Bernie mentioned earlier. I know that the new CDC head has, was, her team worked quite a bit on the DESE guidance, so I think there's some sense that maybe not tomorrow, but within, you know, over the spring, we could see some revisions there. That may prompt us to have some safe guidelines to take a look at. The vaccination is in play, and I think we need to have perhaps some conversations at the school committee level with our local medical team and our DPH reps to see if they could endorse us having a serious conversation. So I think March could be a study month for looking at adjustment to the guidelines. And, and I would say, even if it's not for April of this year, we have to start turning our attention to next year and what that will be. And I get, again, going back to some of the public comments. We may be living with this more than this year. I think we've kind of had, let's get through this year and the vaccine is going to get us to the other side. But there's a potential that six feet is where we're going to live for a very long time. And maybe that sounds disappointing to the three, five folks at this point, but if it is our reality, then we need to look differently at the problem next year and come up with some other things to study because we've kind of exhausted what can we get into our buildings. And I think what we know from our initial summer study is the middle high school, we're not talking about middle high school until we can really talk about three feet with some safety. So we might need to look at, again, this is just projecting out work that may need to be done. If we're looking at significant social distancing guidelines next year, I think we need to look at investing in some classroom trailers examining various, you know, seriously school reassignments to, you know, like the exercise we just went through now of trying to match smaller classes with smaller square footage. You kind of just say, school assignments off the table, look at the whole elementary and just kind of move groups around and make it a blended model. And then if, if need be, we just don't have the space to do that either, maybe look at out-of-district rental space. So almost the same exercise we went through with the Memorial School because we don't have swing space, so we may need to find some to make it workable if we're at six feet next year. So let's assume we won't be there for right now and that there may be some silver lining and four and a half feet become something that's reasonable and kind of the new benchmark like six feet is with some changes over the next few months. But for the purposes of our discussion tonight, again, I would split it into two. Work to be done investigating social distancing and potential fall '21 solutions if social distancing can't be amended. And then tonight, really just trying to decide whether it's in our best interest to move forward with bringing back K2.
All right. So do you want us to have a discussion about bringing back K2?
We would love your approval to bring back K2.
I see Annie raising her hand. And so is Shannon. Annie and then Shannon.
Okay. So I'm going to ask you some return on investment questions. So what is the cost of this, just this effort? And I'm just going to throw them out at you because they're kind of all related. How many students will be coming back? Because we've already had students come back in hybrid and people are complaining that the classrooms are too, the number of kids is too few. So you know, I want to know what the cost is, how many students are coming back, what's the ROI on this? And then as far as I know, we've already spent 600K plus on hybrid. We're in a budget crisis right now. And then just if you could speak to, what are the state, what are the conditions that are in place? So I know that some folks have not brought their kids back because they ski or they play a sport in another, you know, in a club or something, so they're not sending their kids into school because they would be testing all the time. So if you could just speak to those issues.
She's muted. Pam, you're on mute.
I was unmuted on the wrong computer. So I will throw this up quickly because this seems like the time to do so. And then I'm going to ask Jason to speak to the cost of reorganizing and then the principals to speak to the number of students anticipated to return and those they anticipate staying home. And then I'm happy to comment on what we realistically can do in terms of monitoring people's behavior and what we can't. So the good news is we've gotten news that we're getting more CARES money. So Avi, you're, you're better on these numbers because you're the one who put this together. I don't know if you want to run it down like, you know, super quick. What are we getting and how can we use it?
I mean, yeah, I think the slide that you have up kind of says it all. We've been talking until now about the fact that care eliminated, what we've received, which is $403,000 through the three programs that we've been discussing for, for several meetings now. We had talked at some point about FEMA and then how FEMA turned into nothing with, with the new administration coming in. They've asked that FEMA relook at all submissions. I, it's really very premature to know whether there could be any reimbursement there. That's the potential 160,000. I would say that for now, I would not count on that, although we're optimistic that it's even being relooked at. The new news that happened in the past week has been two new phases of CARES Act funds that have been announced by the Department of Ed. The ESDR grant has a second phase, which is got an allocation for MURSD of 207,000 as well as another program called the Coronavirus Prevention Fund 45. So that, that alone will bring our numbers up by about 50% to $655,000. And I think people hopefully remember that the numbers that we're talking about and what we spent are well north of that. And so that regardless, at this point, we'll definitely still be dipping into reserves to pay for CARES Act, sorry, COVID interventions that are not covered. But obviously, it's good news to get because every little bit helps.
Great. Thanks. Jason, could you speak to the potential cost of the reconfiguration of the buildings? Was he able to make it on, Avi?
Looking for him on the line. I don't see him there. He might be one of the call-in folks.
Okay. So let's assume he's having some trouble with mute or he got bounced or he didn't make it on yet. My assumption is it's going to be all in-house costs for custodial maintenance to come in on the weekends and flip the classrooms around. So they would all, for the most part, they would already be working, so I don't think we're going to take significant cost in additional hours. And it may be some minor electrical for some of the technology setup swaps.
Yeah, I would expect the cost to be minor. Yep, minor.
No staffing costs?
No. In, in talking with Jason, he felt that with just the K2 return, we would be okay to continue with our sanitation, sanitizing protocol with the current level of staffing.
But staffing, we have enough, we are, currently have enough staff to handle those folks coming back.
Which staff?
Teachers.
Sorry. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have no new applications for leave at this time.
And because the CARES money, I was hoping was going to alleviate some of the pressure from this budget. So I just, I, when we get to the budget discussion, I'd like to talk about that a little bit more. And I like Kate's idea and I wonder if you could speak to why this and not the kind of the student profiles that she had talked about.
So we did have a discussion about this earlier today and I think the district, any school's responsibility is to have a seat available for any child when they want to return. So if we were to start giving seats away, we would have to come up with, we would be giving another student's seat away. So essentially if you're on remote, if you chose them to participate in the M E R S D program to this point, D E S C has already told us we need to be prepared to return those students when they are ready to return. So when they're ready to return, there needs to be a seat available to them. So if we give it to someone else, and I think there's a whole discussion about how do you assess objectively who should be given a seat and who shouldn't. If we give those seats away, we're blocking other children out and our goal is to get the students, as many students as possible to return to as many days.
But I think, I think Kate was talking about kids with special needs or kids on I E Ps. Can you talk a little bit about how many of our high need students and kids in special programs and kids at the high school, like who's already in a little extra?
So Allison is on for pre-K discussion. I'd love to throw that question to her because I think she's the most expert to give you a K 12 perspective on that.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm on mute. Hi. Hi. I do not have numbers for you, but I can give you a general sense of where we are. So we have since in September, we brought back students in specialized programs, particularly students who had substantial pullout instruction outside the classroom because clearly if students had primarily inclusion programming, they were going to be unable to access that if we were remote. But if there was programming outside the classroom, we were able to have students access that. So we had our specialized programs and over time, most of our students who have out of the class, of the general ed class programming have had options to come in and at the at the elementary level, when we went hybrid, we gave options for children to access some of their services on the days when their cohort wasn't in. So of course they couldn't go to general ed, but they could access their special ed services. So that's been an option. There are many less students coming in at the middle high school. At the middle school, if you're not in a specialized program, you have largely an inclusion program. So those students are primarily remote with a few exceptions. And at the high school, we've offered, but we haven't had a lot of students want to come in for services, but we've had some and it has tended to be our higher need students. But we have had high school students who did not want to be in when their peers were not in. So I could get a number for you and be more specific.
Obviously the great specific numbers right now, but I think it's just really good to have a sense of who's in and that we are having kids in. And how about kids Kate mentioned, kids who are not accessing like have we had kids who just didn't show up for remote on their remote days and have we reached out to those students?
Well, we have. So I can respond more to special regarding special education than general education, but there's been a lot of follow up with those students. I know that there are some students in general education who've had special circumstances and have been able to be in a bit depending on the student and their program. The Department of Ed has given us guidelines around that so that we could prioritize students. But the highest number in special ed are in specialized programs and at the elementary level who are coming in.
Right.
And it tends to be students who have substantial pullout instruction because of just the limitations from public safety perspective on having students come in and access the general education program. There are still parents who are hearing that special ed students are able to come in every day and go to general education classes. That is not true. That is not happening. But we have had a lot of students be able to come in and access services if the services are pullout. That's the differentiating factor.
Thank you. Pam, the one part of Annie's question that wasn't answered yet was how many of the K to two kids are planning to come in?
So if we could, yeah, I think we should refocus back to the elementary and have Jen and John give us a sense of what their class sizes will look like and how many students they anticipate coming, participating in the four day hybrid and who, in the number that may stay remote.
Pam, I estimate roughly 40 students coming back, 40 to 43, give or take. Our class sizes will range from 14 to 18 in K through two.
So we have K through two at Memorial, we have 114 students enrolled. We have 12 that are full remote. So I would anticipate that a few of those full remote people may come back when it wants its four days a week, a little easier to juggle schedules if they're in four days a week. Our class sizes K through two range from 11 to 17 at K to two. So we'll probably have about 100 kids that will be able to be in four days a week.
Awesome. So that's 100, about 140, 150 students total between the two schools. We don't have any costs for the desks. We have desks, right? Didn't we save them from Memorial School? So we have desks. So the only cost that might be there is buses or is that already budgeted?
It's budgeted.
Perfect. So it really is a zero cost to our budget to bring in those, those three classes.
Yeah, I would say it's no, no additional COVID costs.
Thank you.
Okay, Shannon and then Teresa had questions.
You, you guys kind of stole my thunder because I wanted to explore a little bit more about the population that Kate had mentioned. I would really like to see in addition to K through two, three through five, the kids who need the services and Allison did a great job of clarifying that. Thank you.
Teresa.
Okay, I have, I have a question about the the require, the expectation and requirement that then people who have opted to homeschool this year remain in homeschool. And so you know, I'm your target demographic because my second grader remote learning was, was kind of a bust for him. And so we've been homeschooling him for the year. So first of all, can we even do that? Did D E S C give some sort of blanket immunity for this year saying that we can actually tell homeschooling families, they can't come back? That's just like a yes or no. Yes, you're muted, but I think your mouth is saying yes.
I wouldn't go so far as to say there's blanket immunity, but I think we can set it as the expectation that people have withdrawn from the district for the year.
Okay. So the thing I want to say about that, and I've been thinking about this since I saw it in the, in the info that came out is that as it happens, my family isn't one of them. We're, we're remaining homeschool for the year, no matter what. However, our district was so supportive of families who needed to make that choice come fall because for whatever reason, for schedules, for anything at all was so supportive, made the process so easy, supported with, with materials and everything else. And we were really clear with the expectation that students could come back at any time. And they wouldn't necessarily be able to come back to an in-person model unless it was at the trimester break. But I expect that a goodly number of those families who chose to homeschool this year might not have if four days a week was an option back in the fall. And so I would ask, I don't want this to hold up the whole process because I see it as a gain for sure. And especially with Annie's clarification on the budget, that's helped me. But I would really ask that we take a much closer look. Back in November or early December, it was stated that someone was going to be reaching out to these homeschool families, the ones, it seemed to be disproportionately affecting Essex Elementary, that we had more people opt out this year. So I'd ask that we take a closer look at how many homeschool families pulled this year for COVID reasons as opposed to our generally homeschool families? And what numbers we're really looking at and whether we've talked to them to see is their interest? Because I don't like this idea that we act, so many of these families acted in good faith and the district was so supportive in good faith. And now to pull that rug out when there's this option to get back in just seems disingenuous and unfortunate. And I know that's not what the district wants. And I recognize there are real limitations, but perhaps asking for commitments from the elementary families as well, so that we don't end up in a situation like the middle high school where, where you have 90% of people committed and 50% of people showing up and these other families out. So if we could take a much closer look on an individual basis, if we have to, I think that that would be more reasonable, also recognizing we literally have no obligation to people who homeschool on this. But I mean, these are, there are a goodly number of these families that are planning to return to the district. This is a specific circumstance. So that's my big feelings on that.
Okay. Thanks, Teresa. Anyone else have thoughts or feelings to share on the proposal on the table about K to two returning at six feet?
Just one, this is Ken. I agree, it's continuing the direction that we started and we talked about over the summer. So as we're learning and moving forward, this supports it. So I'm in favor. I like the direction.
I like the direction too. I think Teresa has a really good point. I think we probably need to, I think it would be in a good idea for the district to reach out and check with those homeschool families and make sure that they've had a conversation with each of the homeschool families before jumping into a situation that we can't handle. And then but other than that, I think it's great. I think that I know that the principals and Jason have been so creative and trying to figure all this out and the spacing and the distancing. I was wondering during the advisory board group today, we had, Pam, you had a pie chart about other districts and distancing. Because there seems to be like word on the street and I hear from people is everybody else is at three feet and how come we can't be in at three feet? And I really try to stay away from comparing us to what other districts are doing because I know everybody had their own hurdles to get over. I do know that the districts most commonly referred to are Beverly and Gloucester and I just, I hope everybody understands that they're in at a lower distancing, but they're, they only stay for the mornings and then the kids go home for lunch and stay home for the rest of the afternoon. So Pam, can you explain the chart to us, please?
Sure. This is an informal survey that was done of superintendents throughout the state. We had 84 responses. So that's about 23, 24% of the 360 districts that are out there, but a decent sampling. And I think what it's showing you is that six foot social distancing is about the standard. So if you take the large green the large green section of the pie and the gold section of the pie, probably mustardy looking to you. We have, you know, the large majority of the state either started at six feet and remaining there, which is the 46.4%, or started at six feet and like us, maybe starting to have some discussion about when it would be appropriate to revisit that. So we are in good company with this sampling. The eight, the eight point three represented, represents started at three to four feet and they're staying there. The red is already moved, started at six, but already moved. And this is a whole bunch of variations on theme in here. But if you take these two sections of the pie, we are in good company with the six foot measure. And I think there's a mounting conversation about when it is appropriate to start revisiting this because the initial guidelines that were put out by D E S C gave us a span for exactly the issues we keep bumping up against, which is we can come back at six feet, but if one student who returns throws that out of kilter, do we really have to abandon the whole plan? Or if one school can get in at six feet, but the other school has to be at five and a half feet, do we really hold back all of the progress or can we live with some blended model? And to be honest, I can't, when we started talking about this this summer, the idea of a blended model was I couldn't get my brain around it. I felt like we had to have a very solid standard at which to apply. But again, the comment that was made, I think it was Ally who made it earlier. I think we're going to be living with some variation of this for a long time. So we need to continue to grow and evolve our thinking about what we can manage and what we can handle and how we can grow our process to meet the new stages of where we're at.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I think Teresa had another question. You're muted.
Thanks. I just wanted to, so it's, it's a little bit, I'm new still, Pam, so you get to bear with me. But, but I have to address the elephant in the room, especially since we have 140 people on here, that we do have a teacher who made public comments specifically about this topic. And I feel it wouldn't be right to just not at least acknowledge that. And I know negotiations has to happen specifically, but can you or any of our administrators give us a little bit of insight into teacher sentiment about this a little bit? Because I think that that's important to consider.
I guess I'd ask Sarah and Ken, we did have a negotiation session last week and reviewed this proposal with the co-presidents. And I guess I'd ask if you felt that the sentiment expressed tonight was in sync with that. And then I'd ask Jen and John to comment on the work that they've been doing at their schools to prepare for this.
Ah, Ken was not able to attend the negotiation meeting last week.
Apologies.
Only a question for me. I would say that the, this is hard to answer. I would say that it was expressed a little more strongly in the public comments tonight. I, I think that the teachers have reservations. I think if you put that slide back up that had the things that we're considering for a that we would have to consider to reduce the distancing. I mean, they're talking about all these things. We heard from Bita leadership that they would really like testing of students in K to five, but we also heard from one of our nurses from our health team that they're not recommending testing for students in K to five. So I think there's a little bit of wiggliness here, but I, I think at six feet with K to two, I think that some of the teachers have been expressing how important it is to have those younger students in the classroom and how much, how hard it is to reach the K to two students over the screen and how much better it is in person and how they're really desperate to have their students in their classrooms. So I clearly not everybody is speaking for everybody and I certainly am not able to speak for the teachers. So I would like to hear what Jen and John have to say about this too.
Sarah, I sort of second what you just said. I feel that I've heard varied things from teachers. It's not like one strong sentiment. I will tell you that you know, the moving of classrooms over February vacation in the middle of the school year does cause a bit of stress because that's not something in my experience, we typically do, you know, pick up and move classrooms when people are pretty settled. I do know there's varied concern over the safety issue, but it's pockets of conversations I've had with people. It's not like this profound thing that I've heard. So I sort of agree with Sarah. It's a little bit all over when our, our media meeting, when they raise the issue of people feeling strongly about kids being tested. That was surprised to me. I hadn't heard that. It doesn't mean it's not legit. I just had not heard that that was an issue. Since that meeting, I have heard a couple of people speak to that. So I, it's hard for me to say, I have so many conversations with people over the course of the day and they all have different concerns. Some are health related, some are sort of stress related. And then I hear some that are just thrilled to get the kids all back in. And I do have a few classrooms where it looks like there won't be any remote kids. And then I hear some that are just thrilled to get the kids all back in. And I do have a few classrooms where it looks like there won't be any remote kids. So you know, some of those folks are like, yay. So I honestly don't think I can give you one set answer that would kind of cover it all. So I agree with Sarah.
It's complicated.
It is complicated and I hate to misspeak because I don't want to represent how people feel in a way that's not correct.
Yeah, same.
Yeah. So that's why I'm reluctant to make a broad sweeping statement.
Yeah. And just to, just to piggyback on that, I think that's something that we've all struggled with through the entire thing from, you know, a year ago until now. We're so used to being able to make, you know, good, solid decisions that are kind of a, you know, black and white, so to speak, you know, and there's, there's literally nothing that's black and white and in this pandemic education. So yeah, I mean, you, when you, when you talk to teachers, they, they have, you know, different, different concerns. If I were to have to say that they're the, the biggest thing that I hear. I mean, there, you know, we've talked about how hard the teachers are working and we're not just saying that. I've never seen people work as, as hard. You know, I've worked in places where it's, you know, work to rule, eight to three, sorry, contract's done, I'm, I'm out of here. I mean, these people are putting in, you know, probably two workdays every day. And then on the weekend, I mean, they're, they're really, they're just, it's, it's been amazing. So that, that workload has been something that they have been really good troopers. They've kind of slogged through the mud, gotten us this far, which I know the whole admin team and school committee really appreciates. I would say the number one issue that I hear people talking about is, is the, the challenge of juggling students at home with students in person. And so I feel like they've kind of figured that out. It's, you know, it's a bit of a balance now because half of the kids are at home, half are in. By bringing I'll, I'll call it 90% of the kids in and then 10% of the kids at home. I think that feels like it will be even more challenging than it is now. I had the pleasure today of being homeschool teacher for my kindergarten daughter. And it was the most stressful day I've probably had in the last 20 years. It's overwhelming, it's stressful. And I'm talking about as a parent, I emailed her teacher and said, I have no idea how you do this every day. So I think that's the biggest thing. If we were at six feet of social distance and we could say, hey, we're, we're back, K to two is open, everyone come on back. We're going to have a normal school day. We're going to actually teach human beings in front of us. I think that'd be a huge sigh of relief for, for, you know, the teachers that I, that I've spoken to. But I know that's not, you know, exactly where we are right now. So yeah, it's, it's, you know, like Jen, there's a, there's varying areas of concern for people. And it's, and you know, they're trained to work with, you know, children in front of them, especially the K to two students. It's, it's really hard. I mean, a lot of what they do is hands-on and group work and that sort of thing, which is hard to do remotely.
Yes, indeed. As a former first grade teacher, I agree.
Can I add, even though I wasn't at negotiating committee last week, I did want to add one thing. Which is that I think at the end of the day, it comes down to, we are the employer, the district is the employer of the teachers and we owe a duty to everybody going into the schools that everybody goes home in the same condition, if not better than when they arrived. So the health and safety we take seriously and I think part of the engagement. As people have said, it's very much an individual decision by teachers, but I think as Mr. Willis said, everybody's been giving their best. And I think the teachers and the staff and the students have to have as much comfort as they can in the environment. That's possible. Mr. Burnett had made some very good points and that's part of why the negotiations, I look forward to working with people as we keep moving it forward because we're really vetting it out and collectively making sure we're making the safe and right decisions. Both for the students who need the education as well as for the staff and teachers that need to go home to their families every day. So that's my public service plug. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
It's probably worth mentioning to just on the testing, because that seems to be now a new a new area for us to explore, which is the K five student testing. The testing team that was formed back in November, really to start looking at it, because originally we were hoping to have a contract in place before the holiday break. It is made up of two elementary nurses in addition to the high school, middle school nurse and representative from the Manchester Board of Health. And then Mary Higgins and Aaron Kirshner, who are each of the town's health representatives and our school doctor who was a pediatrician, Dr. Graves. So that's the group that was advocating for the six 12 testing protocol and not, not recommending that we pursue it with the elementary level. So the you know, we can go back and revisit it and have conversations with them, but I think it came from an informed expert body, why we didn't originally pursue it. So again, it wasn't in overlook, it was really just listening to the experts on our team tell us that that the conditions are such that they are not considered to be heavy transmitters and that the process itself may be more difficult than need be for that age group. That being said, I know Joanne McWhorter and Kate Stefanic, the, the new interim co-presidents of the association have brought forward Watertown as a model that we could look at for potentially scaling the currently middle high school initiative to the elementary level. But I just to, to ensure that people realize we're, we're working with people who know more about this than I do.
Definitely. All right. Any other questions from school committee for Pam?
Just, I don't know if it's kind of what the appropriate way of doing it would be, but it might be helpful to like prior to decisions like this that maybe affects that, like to do almost like a an almost an informal survey with the staff to kind of get some data behind it. I'm not sure if you guys have a mechanism for that, but at the risk, I don't want to, you know, give anyone false hope or anything like that, but it is as opposed to just kind of anecdotal. It might be helpful to kind of just take the temperature and we can see that kind of in data form, that might be helpful as well. Because I, I, last thing, I do like to, you know, I think it's important to, you know, kind of take care of the people that take care of the people. So I'm glad the teachers, a teacher spoke earlier and I'm, I'm kind of just, would like to see that kind of on a, on a larger scale as well.
I think it's important to say we're proposing this as a next step forward. If it's not something that the committee is comfortable with, we, we can certainly stay in our current format. I do feel like we have a responsibility to continue to grow the program if possible. And I think this discussion came out of the potential of being able to do so with all of our current measures and MOUs in place.
I'm very comfortable with this proposal. I think it's a great idea. I think it's amazing that we figured out how to get the kids back in at six feet. I'm optimistic that the vaccinations are coming down the pike soon. And I am hoping that our numbers will continue to decline. I think this is a win-win and I am all for it. That's my two cents. And I encourage everybody else to weigh in too.
Oh, wait, and it's Teresa. I, I am in support of this. The, it's a win on the budget. It's a win for families. And I have continued concerns and I was glad to hear from Mr. Burnett tonight. I have continued concerns about the shared concerns for the teachers, but at the same time, we are, we're doing this at a continued six feet. And I was really pleased to see those metrics for looking at the change, you know, looking at a decision to change social distancing, that we're not dealing with that. There are metrics in place for when that that kind of discussion can go moving forward. Pam, thank you for that. But because we're, we're talking about at the six feet, which has been in place. I, I am in support of this and I think that families are going to be really in favor. I do really strongly request that we consider that, that discussion with all families though. Impacted.
I agree. I'm also really fully in support of this. I do think that's a great point by Teresa. So I'd encourage that as well. But yeah, as someone who's home with a kindergartner, I think she'll do much better in school. And I'm guessing that's the case with a lot of the youngest learners. So
Are we not voting on this?
Pam, do we need to have a, do you want us to have a vote on this? Or did you just need to take the temperature?
I think a vote would be appropriate.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this plan as presented?
Second, Warnock.
So we will go a roll call vote, Eric?
Well, wait, if we're doing a vote discussion, and my discussion is can we amend this to I, I don't want to vote for it moving forward. I want to vote for it with the understanding that we're going to make another consideration for all the families that are in play here. And so I'd like to know if that's something that's going to be on the table before that, before we just say moving forward, we voted as is and, and now homeschool students are not. So is that something we can?
Pam, how could we amend this? I, because I do think that that's a consideration, but I wouldn't want it to, how can we think about that and embrace that as part of the?
If you're asking me to, to offer a remedy right here on the spot?
No, no, no. I'm just saying.
I think we need to, because what we know right now is that if the homeschool stu, all the homeschool students choose to return, Essex cannot go forward.
Yeah, Pam, I didn't know if you wanted me to give a number or not. I was just counting because, you know, I totally respect and understand Teresa's point of view. But in K two, we have eight homeschool students. And the hard thing right now is because our numbers are so tight in terms of how many we can fit in the classrooms, those eight students. You know, pending what their response would be could potentially sway this in a way that wouldn't, would be prohibitive for us. So I guess that's the question, you know, how do you address that without then making it null? You know, we can't do it.
I think we need to reach out to each homeschool. I don't know who needs to do it, but I think somebody from the administration needs to reach out to every homeschool family and ask if they are committed to staying in the homeschool model for the rest of the year, or if they plan to return to school. But know that we're not going to be able to make the return to school if our numbers go up.
And have, will have also, does that assume all students will be returning to the K to two? So have, have we asked for commitments from families that are planning to stay remote as well? So that we can?
So we have a commitment to every, I feel that we have a commitment to everyone currently enrolled and participating in the MRSD system. But we have folks that have opted for private school and folks that have opted for homeschool and our assumption, our assumption, our belief is that they are going to continue with that commitment through the year. We may not have space for them. Once, one potential solution for homeschool students is if they do opt to return, the answer may be that we cannot return you to your particular school. That we have to put you in the place that has space. But we can return you.
I mean, there be space? If, I'm, I'm just trying to figure this out out loud. So if we have eight students at Essex Elementary who are homeschooled and we don't know whether or not that's above and beyond because of COVID, because some of those are kindergartners, we don't know what their decision was last year. But we might know what the decision was last year for the first grader. So we can kind of glean that. But if all eight decide to come back, there's no room at Essex, is there room for them at Memorial? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm suggesting, that if Jennifer hits her class size maximum for heads and space in a particular grade level. But there's space in Memorial, they could be given a seat there in the interim.
I think that's perfectly appropriate because they haven't already been sort of integrated into a class with it. They're not in a group with a teacher and friends that they've been working with all year.
The, the, the space assessment and Jen, jump in, but and John. Everybody who is on our rolls, so who is on a class roster, there is space available for them to return at six feet. If you're not on our roster, we haven't accounted for you.
That's correct.
To go with Teresa's similar scenario, suppose we have 12 people move in in the next month to grade two. You know, we'll be faced with it and our response probably would be, oh, Pam suggested of adjust or put them in where there's space. And that's similar to students returning from private school or homeschool.
So can I amend the motion?
It may trigger us to revert back to the cohort hybrid. It may trigger us to have to more seriously look at the space considerations. You know, I, I guess my concern is that if we want to hold up the process, that's fine, but I don't know that we're going to get. I, I don't think there's an easy solution because when we go and investigate the situation, if, if people decide at that point, oh, it's an option for me to come back, I think I will. Then we're going to have to reconfigure the whole program or just go with a space available process.
So can we move forward with the proposal as is? And whoever's got a fidget spinner, I can hear you. Go forward with the proposal as it is right now and then ask at the first meeting after spring break to have you give us a report on whether we can accommodate homeschoolers in the flexible model between the two elementaries. Is that fair? I don't want to, I don't want to hold back on something that's a positive move forward. But I also want to, you know, accommodate those homeschool students if we can, if we have more flexibility between the two buildings.
I mean, I think we don't, I don't think we should assume that all the homeschool students are going to want to come back.
Right. And I don't think all those
But I think, I think, I do think that given what Teresa has shared with us about how how the whole plan was presented at the beginning of the year, I think that we need to stick, stick to that. So if it was really presented to people that they'd have the flexibility to come back if they wanted to, we need to make sure that we honor that.
It was on the trimester. So it would be
trimester break.
Jen, John, help.
When's the trimester for elementary school?
Because that's when it, yeah, when it was presented.
Yeah. And we just wrapped up one and had report cards and conferences. So I'd have to look at my calendar to know when the next one is. Maybe there's a teacher on that can help me.
So did you just wrap up the second trimester?
Yeah. So we're looking out to April.
We're already in the third trimester. Doesn't that end at the end of the year?
No.
That it does.
Already more than halfway through the year. Yeah.
Are we, we're in the second trimester.
We're in the second one.
April, April is report cards, April 6.
I mean, so if the homeschool students, if we stuck by the trimester return, there is a chance that by April, we could be looking at being okay with four and a half feet.
Very good point.
So since we're, since we're looking at the trimester date anyway, maybe it makes sense to, to move forward and assess this, but continue this conversation with it well documented that that this is something we're trying to accommodate and deal with. And that gives time to, to complete the process that, that maybe got started in November of actually reaching out to those families and finding out what people are at.
So the motion stands.
Motion stands.
Great.
We're taking care of all of our people. So I'm going to go down the roll call now unless there's any more discussion. All right, Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Absolutely yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right.
Thank you.
So much for everybody, for your work, for to our administrators, our principals, our amazing teachers who I know are about doing this, but I all right.
Stay with us for the budget discussion is critical on what next year we'll look.
Yes, please don't everybody leave. I know how tempting it is. Okay, moving on with pre-K. That's a fun.
This is another positive moving forward discussion. So I'm just pulling up the slides. And I will, I'm just going to give everyone fair warning that I'm going to do another. All mute. There it is. Sorry. Okay. So I just did another mute also. If you are on committee or about to present, that'll be Allison. Avi and Julie is here to answer questions. You're going to have to unmute yourself. Avi and Julie is here to answer questions. Uh, you're going to have to unmute yourself.
Hi Pam, do you want me to start?
If you're ready. I mean, I can give it a quick preface. Um, I think um, somebody's probably asking the question, why is pre K coming up now in the middle of everything that we're doing? And the reason being is that we are um right in pre K registration season or just on the doorstep of it. And uh, something we're not talking a lot about this year, but the memorial project is moving full steam ahead. And in the fall, we'll be opening up the new gym cafeteria administrative space and the new pre K uh rooms. And if you recall, when we uh went forward with the project, we had a pretty long discussion about whether we should do one, two, three, or four pre K classrooms. We settled on two. And because we're going to be opening two, we have room to accept more peer pals than we typically do. And we think this can be a real positive. Financially, it's not going to be a money maker, but it may be a money offsetter, meaning contributing to the current cost of pre K. Um, which will help with our overall budget picture. So um, Allison is really um, our point person on pre K. So I'm going to kick it over to her to kind of take you through uh what we're proposing.
Great. So um, Pam, I'll let you turn the slides for me and I'll give everyone just a quick overview over about what is integrated preschool. That's the term that we use to describe our program. And in an integrated preschool program, we have students with disabilities working alongside their peers without disabilities. And those peer pals who are in the program serve as role models. But it's a program that meets the needs of all students in the program. From meeting the peer pals where they're at to the students with disabilities who may need additional support. We have a play based program. We work with students on pre academic skills. But we also have a large emphasis on social skills and play and readiness for kindergarten in terms of the executive functioning skills, the social skills, how to be a student following routines and directions. And um, we also, another thing that's just different about an integrated preschool versus other types of preschool is that we integrate therapies into the program. So speech and language, OT, PT. And in our program, parents who access the program on behalf of their children will benefit from a very highly skilled staff. We have licensed teachers, our preschool teacher, uh Allison Turple is also a board certified behavior analyst. Our teaching assistant is a registered behavior technician. So they have many skills and a lot of expertise to work with children around typical developmental needs as well as working with students who have more significant developmental disabilities. Pam, you can go to the next slide. So Pam alluded to this, why expand the program? So I'll talk a little bit about the history. Um, back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we had made a decision to consolidate the program into one building to gain some efficiencies. At that time and um even now, um, our, we have a much larger capacity for peer pals than we've been able to fill more recently. Our enrollment has declined. With our half day program and um partial week model, we have three year olds, two days a week. And prior to the pandemic, we had four and five year olds, three days a week. Um, now both cohorts are two days a week. But you can see this year we have six peer pals. Last year we had five peer pals. The the numbers are low. And a lot of the reason for that is because families are working or they may have other children in the elementary school. And so um, our schedule does not align with that. It's a half day schedule. When we had a longer schedule, um, six or seven years ago, and we went until two thirty, we did have more peer pals. We then changed the schedule for a variety of reasons. But we do believe we will get many more peer pals if our program aligns with the times for the elementary school. Um, and we want to be able to have more families access the program. Obviously, we have this beautiful brand new school as well, and we will have two classrooms. We'd like to fill both classrooms. And as Pam mentioned earlier, we gained some economies of scale and expanding to two classrooms. So when we expand enrollment, we can also defray some of our overall costs by having the opportunity for more students tuitioning in. Pam, you can go to the next slide. So our proposal is this, we would have, so now we have these two cohorts on each coming two days a week. Instead of that, we would actually have a dedicated classroom for three year olds and a dedicated classroom for four and five year olds. We would have morning and full day options, the full day being until three o'clock. We would give priority to children signing on for the full day, but there will be a variety of options. And the structure is that we would have a lead teacher in each classroom, certified teacher. There would be a teaching assistant. We um would continue the trend of having a credentialed registered behavior technician as the teaching assistant in the program. And then we would have a shared monitor who is a teaching assistant slash um person who helps out in the classroom, but doesn't need that level of credentialing. Um, and that person would um float between the two classrooms. And then, of course, we have our specialists, our OT, PT, speech pathologists who work with the program. Our proposal in terms of the costs, and then I'll let Pam and Avi break this down a little bit more in terms of the financial picture. But the tuition structure would be um, options for a half day or full day. The times are there. So eight thirty to twelve thirty, which is what we do now, or eight thirty to three. And um, we would actually keep the tuition approximately what it is now for the half day with three fifty um, for uh, three fifty a month for two days, five twenty five for three days. And then for five days, eight seventy five. And then there'd also be the option for full day, and we've extrapolated those costs to full day. And then with a with a slight discount on that. Um, so that you have the figures here as well um, for full day. I should also mention, I didn't mention earlier that the teacher will be in the program until twelve thirty. The afternoon, which is lunch, nap time, recreation would be overseen by um, the TAs and the monitor. And Pam, you can go to the next slide, and I think um, Avi and Pam have worked out the um, the detail, the financial details to share with you.
And Pam, let me run very quickly through the summary.
Sure.
Yeah, so the um, the top left just talks about some of the risks that Allison ran through. And you can see the current program. Tuition per hour is the same and for the the full day program is proposed um, at the twelve fifty rate for five days. It's slightly lower um, due to some of the economies of extending um, for a full day on an hourly basis. And Allison showed how um, partial days, um, partial days per week would be at the same rate regardless of um, whether you're doing the half day or the full, the full day. So the half days for fewer days, um, same rate. The full day program for fewer days, that's the same rate. So that's the top left. On the right, we were just talking about um, before I get to the top right, let's just look at the bottom one, which really shows the the current cost, the proposed expansion and the combined costs and um, the F T E is a full time equivalent. And the cost, those headers are reversed, so I apologize for that. But you can see we're currently running about a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars for the current program. And with an expansion um, for a hundred and forty four thousand dollars, the cost would be that the tuition that you would get from additional peer pals, uh, in addition to covering the expansion would help to cover some of the current costs. So as a result, um, you know, with target enrollment uh covering the expansion, but also a small portion over that, we think we can um, yield uh, about thirty five to forty thousand dollars of savings compared to what we're spending currently. So that thirty five to forty thousand would basically subsidize that hundred and forty seven nine five four that we're currently investing. So I don't want to go too deep into the numbers, but this just shows you some of the things that you might want to see. Understanding, you know, that um, obviously the expansion requires some cost, but we believe it can be covered. And um, the enrollment scenario at the top right, how many students you might need to to make that happen. And so um, we wouldn't be at the full, we're not assuming full capacity uh, at the Department of Ed Met uh max of fifteen students in each class. We're assuming less than that. And based on the number of students at this age in in both towns, we're talking a a minority, yes, a minority. Those numbers in thirty, you know, twenty five to thirty percent range. So um, that's kind of the high level. I don't really want to get too far into the weeds, but hopefully the basic concept is that the goal is to pay for the expansion and offset some of the existing. That's about thirty five thousand dollars.
Avi, can I ask you a question about the tuition? How does that um? How does that compare with what some of the local preschools are charging? Because I remember we had this conversation a few years ago. And we were never, never able to get the draw of kids that we were hoping for because we didn't offer a full day. We didn't offer that flexibility to go into the afternoon. But it's great to see that now.
From what I have seen, uh, this would be it would be the programs that are in the uh, in the area. So it would be um, but I would say not significantly below, but below enough to create a savings there for families. But Pam, maybe you or Allison, you might have more data on that.
Because of the size, I don't have more data other, because we looked at the same number. So we are coming in just below um, one of our uh, area preschools. Um, and then there are several that are higher than that preschool. So I think we're just below the lowest private provider around. Um, we're probably a little high on the public school side, but I think that's one of the um, the casualties of being on on the smaller side. It's, you know, we, we need there's only so much scalability with the two classrooms. So I think it's a good start, you know? I I see this very much as cup half full. We are making, we have the potential, um, strong potential to make money to offset costs that we currently have. So we're reducing our budget line um, by bringing in some revenue. And we're beginning to build the capacity for having an expanded pre K program, which, you know, before all of this started. And I think as we move forward, is going to become an increasing the um, serious discussion about the concept of universal pre K. So we will be in a good position to transition to that when it happens and will hopefully be able to make a very strong case as to why uh, when we go to build Essex Elementary School, we need to have two additional classrooms there to, or one, whatever the proportional need be to accommodate even more students. You know, we talked ourselves down from the four rooms originally, thinking that might be too much to to jump into right away. So I think this is a great, a great way to make a step forward and very exciting. I think the the program is is a super program. It has a great reputation. The teacher is phenomenal. And we're offering brand new state of the art space. So I think there's a lot to attract people right now. And I think it's a real, it feels good. I know um, e- even in our conversations about putting the proposal together, it felt really good to be working on something that was positive, upbeat um, and future oriented. Because we're spending a lot of time on just kind of slogging through the day to day. So I think we're excited about this. We're hoping we can have your support to go ahead and utilize, use this fee schedule and begin recruiting your pals.
So I just want to make a little plug here. It's a little personal. Most of you guys know this, but um, my older son Tyler was in the very first class of the integrated preschool when this started in the district. And now he's graduating and he's going to his first choice and he got in early. There's a lot to say about how this program starts and how we follow these kids through the process. He's got amazing supports and it started here in the foundation and Allison Turple is a rock star and she's still there. So I think this is a fabulous program. I'm happy to see it um, uh, expand and I'm totally in favor. It's tremendous. And I'm putting, I put my money where my mouth is because he's right here. And he's going to kill me.
That's awesome. Thank you for giving that story, Shannon.
Some questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So again, this is wonderful to hear this. Um, you know, we talked about expanding preschool a couple of years ago. I was kind of cynical about it. Reluctant to make the commitment because it would mean we would have to build a building to to accommodate. So, but this sounds really great. First of all, it's responding to parent concerns about our district not being responsive to to parents that work. So that was something that was kind of a criticism of us several years ago. And here tonight we heard two, two program proposals that address that issue. So I want to thank you guys for putting this together. Um, I think the the reason, the fees are very reasonable. And I want this to come out the way I mean it. I'm gonna probably blow it. But you know, if we're competitive, which I think we are, um, we're kind of below competitive rates, I think. But the thing about an, the public school system is that you have teachers who are trained to to teach kids who have needs that may not even be identified yet. So you've got kids on an I E P, but you've got kids who um, may not have needs that have been um, identified yet. So that's the value of a program like this, that we have teachers that are trained to do this kind of work. And Allison Turple um, was my first kid's kindergarten teacher and um, if still, I still think of her as twenty five years old. And she is a fantastic person. And you know, we, our family loves her. She's really great. And I wonder if we need to adjust the tuition because you're not going to a preschool that has a bunch of um, not skilled teachers in it. You have skilled teachers. So I'm just, I just want to throw that out there because I don't want to like put ourselves in a tuition box that we can't get out of. And I'm not saying like jack it up, you know, too high, but is there a slight adjustment that might account for the fact that you've got skilled staff? So I'm just going to throw that out there. And then Allison, if you could speak to, if you look at Avi's chart, the last slide, um, that peer to peer, you know, I thought it was supposed to be one. Um, and I see that your target is eight to fifteen, but are we planning on growing that? And if you're growing that, how do you ensure that those students on an I E P are really getting the attention that they need um, at that point? So that's, those are my questions. Thank you.
I'll try to tackle a couple of those. So um, we can talk further about the tuition, but I will say that given where other public schools are with their tuition and looking at our competitors in the private preschool category, I would say I feel strongly that we're in a good place. We're, we're just a little bit below um, some of the private preschools. And and we're a little higher than some of the public school preschools. But again, as Pam said, some of those programs have many more classrooms than we do. And so being a small school, we do have some uh, small district, we do have some constraints around that. So just looking at the other rates, I believe that we are in a good place. And um, parents who haven't accessed the program um, or couldn't access the program, it seems to be less cost driven and more driven by um, the hours. But I, I, I just don't want to price us out of the running for families, for working families too, because preschool is expensive.
Fair enough.
So I, that's my, my thinking. We did talk about it a lot and I um, And I, and we talked about a little bit higher rates and we've definitely gone around on it. So that was one of your, your questions. And then the other question is the class size. So the Department of Ed requires us to have a teacher and a teaching assistant and a, we have to have both and a maximum of 15 students in a class. If there are 50% or less students with special needs. So we're doing what the Department of Ed has required us to do. And when we move to two classrooms, we'll actually be able to spread the students with disabilities over two classes. And so they'll be in smaller cohorts of students with disabilities. There is a skilled teaching assistant plus we'll have the monitor. And certainly if any student comes in who has very high needs, we would have a one-to-one for, or if there were two students with relatively high needs, we could have additional staffing for those students. We did not put that in the model because that would be on a case-by-case basis. And that's something at times we need to do in special ed for specific students. But that is how we would handle it and how we have been handling the staffing over time.
I meant the, I apologize for not being more clear. The, I meant the IEP to general population student. I thought it was supposed to be one-to-one. And that was kind of my question is how do you those students from getting kind of lost in the mix if they're outnumbered?
I don't see a disadvantage
Okay.
for those students, actually. It, our, our ratio of peer pals to students with disabilities has varied very much over the years. And we're supposed to be less than 50%. Sometimes we've prepped a little bit over that. But I, I haven't seen a difference because the students don't necessarily see each other as they might in other grades as, you know, you have a disability and I don't. And they all work really well together. So I, I don't, I just don't get that sense about preschool. And if we have, if we can spread the students out over two classes, it is an advantage because the more individualized attention is, it's more readily available to the students who have higher needs if there's a lower number of students who have higher needs. So I'm sorry I misunderstood your question, but I haven't seen, I just haven't seen that as an issue in preschool. I don't know if Allison's here and wants to speak to that.
Yes, I am here.
You are here.
There's that 25-year-old.
I'm not putting my video on just because you said that, Annie. But let me understand the question, Annie, a little bit better. That you're saying, explain it again, that the one-to-one, you were concerned about what?
I thought that that was always the goal, that it was one-to-one. And so I'm just wondering, you know, do those students who, the program's really designed for them, right? I just want to make sure that if we put in tuition students, that we don't, we don't overwhelm the real purpose of the program. I guess that, and I may be wrong. I just want you to speak to it.
So yeah, no, I agree with Allison. I don't, I don't see it. I think traditionally in the, in the preschool, communication challenges have been kind of the prevalent disability. And so we do a lot of work to support that language development. But if you think about it, aren't all four and three, four and five-year-olds developing language too? So there's, they get the same benefit of it. We're promoting their language through our strategies too. So I see that we can balance it.
Thank you.
And again, Annie, I, I hear your, you've raised a lot of good points. And I, I hear your point that if that class gets bigger, will we still be able to meet the needs of students with disabilities? And the role modeling value that we get out of peer pals is very high. And if at any time we felt in a particular class that we had an especially needy student, we would address that through the IEP process and they may receive additional support for that reason. So we would always be looking at that through the IEP process.
Pam, do you need a, do you need a vote on accepting this proposal?
Yes, please.
Yes. Okay. So do I have a motion to accept the pre-K, the pre-kindergarten peer pal expansion plan?
Yes, I'll make that motion happily. Second?
I think that was Shani and Anan.
Yes.
Oh my God, Shannon and Annie. With me tonight.
Wow, I've been called many things, but.
Fortunately, half the people already left the call. Okay. Is there any more discussion on this? All right, Eric? Eric is a yes. Anan, Annie?
Anan says yes.
Right. And how about Shani?
Shani is a yes.
Okay, very good. I believe that Matt had to go take care of his baby. I don't, Matt, are you there? He had a baby emergency. Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Very good. I, I just, I pushed for four preschool classrooms. I don't think we can do enough to provide quality preschool. So I am very, very pleased to see this moving forward. And thank you to everybody for their work on the, on the proposal. And Allison Turble, I'm so glad you're here with us. My children were not lucky enough to have had you, but I hear it's all wonderful and it's going to be amazing. So thank you.
And Mrs. Turble?
Okay.
So on to the budget, I think, is our last big topic of the night.
The budget.
So I guess we'll start by saying we're picking up where we left off last week. So I just thought I'd reboot a couple of the slides to reframe the discussion. So our job tonight is to settle on an adopted budget. I guess I'll include a few caveats. So the budget we determined tonight can be changed. Informally, we've always agreed that it doesn't go up from here, but I don't think there's any concern in any party if it's reduced from here forward. So the number we land on tonight should be probably as close to where we think we will be. But we don't have to have all of these decisions completed tonight. For those who may be new to the conversation or just to do a quick reminder of how we were having the discussion last week, is we were having, I was encouraging you to think not only about this budget, but the budgets of 23 and 24 and potentially what some of the work may be down the line. In that, you know, it's a fairly well-accepted fact that schools, school budgets grow faster than the two and a half, the prop two and a half tax circuit breaker. What we do every year is our best to come in as close to level services as possible. And then we have to work that number down in consultation with our communities based on where we're at. And we just reviewed last week that what this does is sets up perpetual, a perpetual structural change. And it's not any one budget year that can solve the problem, but it really needs to be a long-term strategy. And I think we've been working on this for years. We've been laying out multi-year budgets. And I think we need to have some hard conversations going forward about kind of the reality of how the budget grows and what the communities truly want from the schools and whether or not we should be not growing at an annual rate, but really kind of designing to the number that we have. So those are the conversations that we need to have. I don't think we have time to have them all this year. So I think what we're going to recommend tonight is we do a one-year compromise budget and then kind of gear up in the fall and start having some town halls, some public hearings to take some input on whether or not we should be looking to move. This was a big part of our conversation last week, whether we should be looking to move to a kind of a, we live at two and a half and we build a program that can exist within that confine. Or we accept a growth rate that's a little higher than that and we maintain the program we have now and continue to make changes and evolve. But the scope of the program stays about the same. What we're, what we think is necessary, how it's been handled in the past, is we're coming up on the point in the cycle where multiple years of cutting has led to no longer having an appetite to cut because we've, we've moved about seven positions over the last three years through attrition. So now we're starting to turn to reserves to close gaps and reduce assessments in this process of cutting and using reserves to make it work, to kind of patch it all together to create a one-year budget to get to the next. Kind of puts us in a position where we're eventually going to need a correction because unless we replace reserve, the reserves in our budget that we're using as a revenue source, those reserves will eventually be depleted, leaving us with only cuts or an override option in the future. So what we're, we're doing with this budget is kind of sounding the alarm that we are at one of those crossroads right now where we probably can go through 24 using reserves. But at some point, we either, we have to pick a path. And the path could be a two and a half cap or the path could be kind of a cyclical override program, either short-term or long-term with a mutually accepted average growth rate that's closer to our natural rate of growth. So I just took a minute to do that because again, we just really, we're going to talk a little bit about reductions and cuts and people are going to want to delve into, well, what exactly would you take out to make ends meet? And I think the point that we're at is that doesn't really matter at this point in time because all of the cut proposals are, are not what we want to do. They don't enhance the program. They don't provide a better service for students. They don't take something that's antiquated or inefficient that we have identified and transform it into something new and progressive to meet students' needs. We're really just taking resources out of the system in the least, in a way that has the least impact on student, staff and families. So I know there's a desire to kind of dig in and do a cross comparison of what the potential cuts are. But some of what we had identified last year that I thought would carry us through have just within the last week, no longer, they're no longer an option because of different student needs and mandates that we are responsible for. So we also spent some time last week just looking at what our average annual increases for spending and assessment are to show you that we have a sense of what the real natural growth rate is. And then we talked about the, kind of the three-year total of reductions that have been made already. So if you go back to FY18, coming into this year, when we're going to start to talk about $500,000 and $800,000 in reductions, we've already taken out $1.6 million in program, staff, kind of even some nibbling around the edges cuts, you know, reducing summer overtime, cutting back and using stabilization to fund capital investments during the year. So we talked about COVID. So that brings us to the updated benchmark reduction slide. I think this is, this can drive our conversation tonight. So kind of keeping the big picture in mind, this is a multi-year problem that we need to solve. It started before tonight and it's going to carry through for another couple of years. I think what we're trying to figure out is what's the best path, not only for just getting through this year, but setting us up for the work that may need to come afterward. So a quick review of what you're looking at, and there is a new column tonight. So our budget had a 3.75 increase in it. That required us to maintain that 3.75 level services. We still needed to find $275,000 in reductions and use $335,000 in reserves just to make 3.75 work. So we already started in a position where we didn't have enough revenue or assessment dollars to make the 3.75 budget work. So we're, we start in a cut position. We can assume wherever we land this year, we will start next year in a cut position, meaning we have to reduce something to make the numbers work. What we do know every year is that we start so early that some of, of the reduction comes just through assumptions revision. So what we think we know when we build the budget in November isn't necessarily where the numbers really land in March or April. One good example is the healthcare number. If you recall, we started with a 6% assumption. Last meeting, we were very, two meetings ago, we were really excited because that 6% assumption through discussions with our brokers, we felt we could reduce that to three because they were very optimistic about what the renewal would be. The meeting after that, which was last meeting, we had had a second discussion and they were introducing something new, the, the kind of the COVID costs that would be layered on to everyone's renewal. And they were saying, no, you should probably plan on the six or seven range. So we amended our number again and it went up and it was costing us more money. So again, we had another conversation with them and Avi went through with them line by line, how they're arriving at it and what they thought the number would truly be. And again, we've been able to revise to about 4%. So that number could go up, that number could go down. Don't know. But that's an example of how we sometimes gain and lose to be able to close the gap in things that really don't have an impact on, on the schooling side. The same is true with Chapter 70. They've come out with some information about the House budget. We think we're going to get $35,000 more than we were projecting. So we gain a little, we lose, gain a little, lose a little, gain a little back. And it looks like we're starting to refine these numbers a little bit. But this isn't going to carry us through and close the gap. So we go through and look again for the least impactful cuts that we can make. And by least impactful, last resort is touching program or staffing. Okay. Not because, because we have already, through previous years of cutting of $1.6 million, really removed any enrollment-based reductions that could be done or attrition reductions that could be done. Now people's jobs may be at risk or programs like instrumental music or elementary foreign language or others we could identify, maybe things that have to go. And we usually prioritize things that have to be put in the cut list as things that still allow students to access the full core program, fall into the discretionary category and don't compromise any of our commitments to things like prep time through the contract. Okay. So they're not random and none of them are things that we would probably recommend if we weren't in this position. So the 3.5 column is really just, we keep growing what the potential reduction options are. 3.5 represents the low end of our multi-year model. The multi-year model is our, our long-term projection of how we will grow. And then we get into the 3.2 assessment to Essex and the 2.5. So we know going into this, at one point Essex had floated that a 2.5 assessment increase for them would be preferable because they are, they're in a position where they're having some trouble closing gaps in their budget this year. We proposed last week kind of a middle ground, which is we were at 3.75. They're looking for 2.5, perhaps 3.2 is where we could land. So coming in tonight, and then I'm going to turn it over to you guys to discuss. My recommendation is, I'm still where we were last year, which is I can't in good conscience recommend additional staff cuts, but I, but we can do it if we have to. So I would say ideally, I would like to be at 3.75, realizing there needs to be some compromise. I would recommend we look at pros and cons of the 3.5 versus the 3.2 column in terms of reduction. 2.5, I think drives us, drives us to a point where we're going to take all potential cuts and truly have no place to go after this. And I think the one other thing I'll bring to your attention is this total gaps, reserves plus reduction. These are your starting points for our correction asks as a. These are your starting points for our correction asks as of this year, right? So for every column we move to the right, the initial ask grows considerably. So in the 2.5 reduction, so we cut enough and use enough reserves and every number in green is some form of reserve. We are essentially saying that to reinstate the position, they could come back differently than they are now, but to reinstate the staffing levels. And to replace the reserve usage, we would be at a starting point of a million dollars before we even begin factoring next year's budget. Let alone 24. So it would be 850 for 3.2 and 670 for 3.5. So I think the question is tonight. Where are you most comfortable and what do you see the long-term plan being? Are you in, you know? Do we realistically need to look at adjusting our budget to be within the 2.5 annually? Are we as a committee looking to make the case as to why we need. A higher growth rate and additional revenue to re-correct? I think one of the things that I, that makes me concerned is our last override was about not using reserves ever again as revenue and we find ourselves. Right back there. So it's a good, it's a short-term solution. It's a bridge, as Avi has said. But it's also. Once we start doing this, we know what the outcome needs to be. And the outcome needs to be to find a, a way to replace that revenue. So whilst it may be tempting to cut deep or run up res, res, reserve use now. We are just creating a bigger problem to solve in the future. So we'll love to hear from you on the direction you would like us to take.
So. You know, last meeting was fraught. I'll, I'll say that that was a. Messy meeting, but. You know, where we are, Shannon, I think you might agree with me is, is where we thought we'd be. You know, when we've been talking at collaboration, which is going for an override in 24. I know that next year will not be good for the town of Manchester. They've got a lot going on this year. And I think it would be confusing to think about an override for next year. But what I was kind of going into this meeting wanting to discuss is how do we get ourselves to 2024? For an ask and. I would love to have you speak to that and what that would mean. Whoever would love to take that one.
Wait, Andy, can I, can I jump in for a sec? So.
Yeah.
Do you mean? I'm confused by your question. So how do we get to the point that we're asking for an override? We're already there. We're.
No, no. How do we get to 2024?
Oh, how do we bridge the gap?
Yeah. How do we get there? And I think. You know, I'm looking at the reserve number and I think it's, I'm deceived a little bit by the budgeted reserves line underneath the, underneath reductions. Because there's so much above it that's green, right? And I know we had talked a little bit about maybe taking 120 from OPEB. Cause that was the gain for the year.
But that's already, and we're already doing that.
One, no, it says 100 here. It says OPEB 100. I was thinking we were going to go to 120. I mean, it's, it's robbing, I think it was 200, 20,000. And. You know, I know, I know it's kind of just shifting. From one account to the other, but you know, I'm just wondering if we did that, can we. Can we use that elsewhere? Or what are your thoughts on that, Avi?
I'll give you a technical answer. I'm going to give you the, basically every dollar of reserves we use, regardless of an account. Is money we're going to have to ask taxpayers to give us back in the form of revenue.
Right.
I think the question that I've arrived at today is. What's the probability that Essex or Manchester is going to feel comfortable with the starting point? So if this is a million dollars or $850,000 in 2022. FY22 and FY24, we can assume double or triple. So the more reserves we use, the higher we're going to drive this number up.
Yep.
So we can't really kick this. We can't really kick this can down the road forever. At some point we're going to have to reconcile the rate at which we grow with. The desire for us to stay at two and a half.
So if you were looking at the columns, right?
Yep.
670 is our whole, if we vote on the 3.5. Column. Next year we add another 300, right?
Well, we grew, we grow at 3.75.
Right. So then our number going into the next is about 2 million, right? Yeah.
Bobby, this is where you can.
I mean, you can.
Use your mathematical line. We're, we're doing such back of the envelope here. We don't want to lead people to.
And you're at six, you're at 670 in column two. Of which 335 is coming from the prior year. So. You know, you could.
Plus a, plus a hundred, plus. It's really 445 in reserves.
So I would add. Essentially the. Let's just say two, $300,000 of fresh deficit potentially. This up, for the subsequent year, if you were to have a number around. 3.5% for the subsequent year. I mean, so I think the short answer to your question is. The gap, you're going to. You know, without cutting and digging a deeper hole, which I'm saying, which I fully agree with. You need to have slightly higher assessments to get there. So as little use of reserves as possible because. And cutting to lower the assessments or any additional use of the reserve is going to be things that you're asking for in return subsequently. And I, I get the fact that. You might need to do some of that because. Ready yet today to make a decision right here and now, or maybe even next year, it takes some time to go through this. So some of that is unavoidable. I think we just want to minimize the amount that we're. Either cutting now or spending out of one-time funds now to come back for later.
Yeah.
Can I answer Pam's question?
Yep.
Are you done? Okay. Pam, I think your question was around, should we plan on cuts? How do we manage this in the long run? As a school committee member on this, what I heard last week, we spent a lot of time talking about the budgets. In the past month or so, I realize that this is an unusual year. And I am behind needing to go into reserves. The town of Essex and the town of Manchester both have a tough year. But I do not think that we should. Constrain ourselves to perpetual cuts or shrinking the services that we provide. I think I was in fifth grade. I remember for some reason, I remember fifth grade being behind the town library when I first heard about proposition two and a half being passed. And I looked at the CPI since then and. Surprisingly enough, the CPI for Massachusetts in the intervening time, I think has exceeded 2.5%. On an ongoing basis. So yes, there are going to be the need for overrides. And doing this, I, I think prop two and a half is good in terms of it provides a dynamic tension. I think you and Avi are probably some of the most steady budgeters that I've ever encountered through massive health insurance spikes. And global pandemics. And I have, I guess I wanted as a school committee member, say, I support you in continuing. To provide the services to the students of the town. And if this year we have to dip into reserves further, so be it, but I really am not up for making significantly further cuts. Or to plan on a program that shrinks. What we provide does my two cents.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I think. What's probably obvious, but I'm going to say it anyway, whatever we commit to. In terms of closing the gap, obviously becomes where we start asking for an override. So we're guaranteed in spending that money, but we're not necessarily guaranteed in getting it back. I think that's, that's kind of the elephant, elephant in the corner of the room. So that's why. That's why it just makes this all the more difficult.
True, but reserves are for this sort of, these sort of events in these sort of years. And we do have healthy reserves, I think.
And we've done this before.
Agreed. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so you're recommending column two, Pam? Oh, Pam, you did.
I would recommend staying as far to the left as we can, while at the same time trying to meet our partners halfway. So. 3, 3.5 doesn't feel like a big move, but. For now, today, I think if we went to 3.5 and then took a deeper look at. What these numbers, you can't see me using my cursor, what our assumptions really end up being, what the state funding really, I mean, do they come through? You know, there's so many unanswered questions that could add a little bit to our revenue picture. And then we can, if there's. An interest, we can, you know, we always try to find some type of inefficiency. I think my concern at this point is. Is identifying an efficiency that turns into a loss instead of going to our list, our shell list of improvements or. Investments that we wanted to make in ourselves. And I think we're going to, and I was sharing this with Avi earlier, a big part of my concern in this is we are. Working on our budgets in two silos. COVID's over here and our budget's over here, but there is going to be a coming together. Of the needs, student needs that COVID produces. And our operating budget needing to provide traditional supports and interventions, mental health issues. I think from the onset, we've been concerned about. Potential increase in special education. Identifications just because of, of, you know, learning loss. I think it was good news last week. And the elementary principals that we're not seeing a lot there, but. When we return to some type of normal pattern, I think we can assume that there's going to be some need for remediation in pockets. So what does that look like in terms of staffing? Some of the staffing cuts that we had identified for last year have already dried up because of that. You know, I think we're carrying a half. Half FTE special education reduction. We already know that that's not possible given our, our caseloads. So. There's a lot that just is very much up in the air in terms of, we could make a cut today. And lose that cut tomorrow because we have to implement something. You know, TAs are a good example of that. Every year, you know, I, I think one of our scenarios here has just two identified TA positions. Being reduced. And a lot of times we can handle that because somebody's moved on and somebody gets put into a different position. So it's not always somebody losing a job. But I can also see us committing to that and then needing actually a plus one or two by the time we start the year. So we are very tight all the way around. There's not a lot of flexibility. So I do think it's worthy of, you know, simplify my answer, I'd say 3.5 with a commitment that we will continue to examine some potential. Additional reductions throughout March.
Can you explain to us, and I, I'm sorry that I don't understand it. Can you explain why column one with a 3.75 increase and column two? There's fewer reserve use, fewer, fewer reserve dollars in column one than column two. And you know, I'm a whiz at the math. So if you could help me see what I'm missing, that would be great. It's 60,000.
You're, you're essentially bringing in, you're bringing in a lower assessment, which requires. So it, it's probably because of the. There's also some operational reductions in there.
Okay.
Is that what I'm looking at?
What does that look like?
The only thing that changes from 3.75 to 3.5 is the addition of reserves. We don't make any other cuts.
Not less reserves, they're more reserves, much over, less. Yeah, no, no, you said it right, Pam. I'm going to Annie. I think you said, Annie, you were less reserves in the second column, but there's more.
I see six, so total gap. Oh, I see. The reductions are high. I apologize. Sorry. Okay. But where are those reductions coming from? Those are reductions are coming from.
We have no reductions in the first two columns. Our adjustments, I'm sorry. We have, we've added, I should probably explain the, the staffing tide. So we've gone through our entire staffing and identified some. With a high level of certainty, some staffing changes that will take place going into next year that may yield $50,000 in savings.
Okay.
So could I move that we approve a budget with the three and a half percent increase, the second column from the left? And get that second in, then continue further debate, but I'd like to move toward an endpoint.
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay. So more discussion on sticking with the three and a half model.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make one. Point and that is that, you know, we have, it's February. Our eight, our annual town meetings are April and May, and they'll probably be pushed out because of weather. So I'm hoping that we can use the next eight weeks to continue to work with the towns on where we are with our budget and see if they see any. Gains. I think we've seen some good news from this new administration. Hopefully we'll get some. Some more good news and that maybe we can not be stuck in. Our positions, but that we would work together in the next couple of weeks to just. See, see how we can work together. On this year's budget.
I think that sounds like a good plan. Is there any other discussion?
I have a question. Earlier, Avi, you mentioned that we have more CARES money coming in. So that's a very excellent piece of news. Does that apply to communities as well? Because I know the CARES Act. Funding was different for municipalities than it was for regional schools, regional school districts. So does this mean the towns are getting more CARES Act money as well?
Yeah, I cannot speak to that because to be honest, this is very fresh off the press. So I would, I would have to check in with, with the towns. Where what we're getting is, these are funds that have been allocated directly to school systems. So I don't know. I would imagine at some point there'll be some discussion of that.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Sort of related. So earlier in the discussion, when we were talking about the. Move, move toward more in-person time and we were talking about looking toward fall and how. We may have to revisit things then for a different model moving forward to not be in the same boat next year. Things like portable classrooms or rental space and that sort of thing. So how? How does this impact that? If we, if we stick ourselves in one box and say we're, we're capped at this amount and we vote on that tonight. Then where does that come from? We're then looking at other cuts to, to reorganize? Help me know if I'm misunderstanding this.
You are not. But I think that's where we go back to our silos where we would probably put COVID-related costs against reserves or CARES money that we may get. To assist us with those types of specific COVID measures. And not put something like a trailer rental into the operational budget. We couldn't, there's, there's no way. But I bring up the reserves use slide. At that point, depending on how much CARES money we get beyond this next installment. A trailer rental, you know, and I didn't throw it on the list just to throw it on the list, we may have to look at it. I mean, if we have the. Potential for going another year like this, I think we need to look at all options. I mean, that's about 250K per unit. Before we install it. So I think we'd have to look to reserves, which means we'd have to. You know, we know we have some committed to the budget. We'd have to look at some of the projects we have planned. Pull it with the CARES money and see what has to get pushed off. But it could apply more pressure to our reserve funds that. Help us, cause it should deplete them in a quicker timeline.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I mean, one thing on this list, just, you know, we probably could talk with the towns about Brook Street and how there may be a different way. Of approaching that particular project. I think we own Highland Field. In the gym. And we, we own all of the building pieces, but this may be one where we could have a more. Detailed conversation about how that's going to get funded. Whether that gets set aside as part of a, a larger fields project. I mean, I don't want to, you know, speak for them, but there may be some discussion to be had there.
Relative to. Relative to that, Avi, have you, um, you know, we talked a little bit about that, those capital item things on the, um, annual town meeting warrant. Have you thought anymore about that? Um, not for this year, but maybe the next year and, um, or, I mean, could you even think about that for a fall town meeting? You know, we have two town meetings a year in both towns. So, um, just didn't know what your thoughts were on that.
I think it's, um, it's really a political question. You're taking money that we don't, uh, ever, so if people don't know, we're on the phone, we are saving money every year. Our cost of the middle, uh, of the middle school, high school, memorial school bonds goes down. So we, we kick off savings every year. That's and so the question is could we towards some capital items instead of having them in our operating budget? So I think that that would be, you know, a question of whether we want to go to, you know, do a, a new structure of annually to do that and have each specific project approved in that manner. Um, and so that, that's a little different from how we do it now. I think it brings to people's mind the fact that we're not increasing taxes and we're saving that money uh, and allocating it towards other areas. I think it might be educational for the community. Um, flip side is right now, I think you have the flexibility to figure out from year to year, which projects to prioritize, especially because some of what we're allocating in our capital plan is money for things that could come due because we have a very old building at Essex and, um, it's not like we are, some of those projects we anticipate could happen at any point in the next five years, but some of them were not necessarily, um, planning for a specific year. So I think it's just a question of how you want your approvals to go, but either way, I think financially they end up being sent.
Thank you. Do you want us to move the question?
Sure. I was just going to ask if there was any more discussion, but I was giving a dramatic pause in case people just wanted to fill in the space. All right. So let's take a vote on this, um, question on the table to go with the three and a half percent. Increased budget. Uh, Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes, as a high level budget? Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Um, Matt, I believe is not back. Matt? Okay. Uh, Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes, with no conditions.
I'm also a yes. Thank you, everybody, for your very hard work and diligent discussions on all this over the last couple of months. Amazing.
Can I just add for a quick point of just, um, clarification for our minutes and, um, just for our record, Pam, if you don't mind putting that last slide back up for a quick second. So one of the things that we generally want to make sure we do is have the school committees vote, reflect an actual budget. So, um, I'll be able to come back at a subsequent meeting and just provide that full budget document that reflects column two with the 334,500 reductions to get to a target total assessment of 3.5%. And based on our rough estimates at this point, we're talking about a budget spending of 27,930, 27,930,703. That number could move slightly based on the exact items that we're putting in. And the total assessment vote based off of that would be 24,284,731. And as I've mentioned before, the apportionment, um, could change slightly um, based on the fact that we're changing different types of inputs between instructional, non-instructional costs and revenue. So that, those are the numbers that I'm taking, um, forward that I'd like to be reflected in the minutes, based on the vote that you've already taken. And then the other item that I just want to, um, make sure we have approval for in our minutes tonight is our capital budget. And by that, I do not mean the facilities capital that we're talking about. It's the debt service budget that we bring, um, every year to the school committee, um, and have a separate vote on. So, uh, that item, uh, and I'm just pulling up the numbers right here, I apologize, is, um, a total budget for fiscal '22 of $4,272,088, which is a reduction of 143,03.2%. So I, I would love to ask for a motion on the capital budget of $4,272,088.
Pam, are you, are you pulling up that as it looks like you've shifted slides to the?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying. I am trying to. It's in PDF, so it's a bit of a trick, but give me one second and that'll be up.
No, thank you, Avi, for the precision required. No, I was going to say, let's do the capital budget to the, to a dollar amount.
Probably pull if you want me to, if you can.
That's in the packet we got today, right?
It was in the packet we got today. We
Yeah. What page? Do you know?
Um, well, it was a standalone attachment as I sent it to Pam.
Oh. Here it's coming. It's just, we needed to be a little patient.
There it is. 4272088.
So moved.
New, all expense.
So moved.
Seconded, Warnock.
All right, Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes, sorry. I was fooling around the screens, trying to get that document. Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you. And this is where you can see to Annie's questions about the capital strategy, that those numbers going down each year. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Um, that's the end of the budget adoption portion of the meeting. It's now it's time for school committee comment. So Teresa?
Thank you. Thank you for turning the time over to me for the obvious school committee comment, and I do have one. I'm hoping we can just clarify for any parents left and to get word out based on our discussion earlier. Can parents start to plan on their kids returning to a four-day week instruction the week after vacation with those two dates for asynchronous? Can they definitely plan on that? Or is this subject to negotiation? Or are we waiting on anything else?
K to two parents.
K to two parents. Thank you.
They can plan on it. The, the bullet win that was never discussed is we're going to put out a, a small survey, uh, tomorrow if we're lucky, Thursday for sure, that just, uh, does a quick check in on how hybrid's going. And asks some questions of the K two parents in terms of their intent to return and whether or not they're going to need busing. So that will have the plan in there and, um, it'll serve as a, as a notice. So there'll be a little cover on it saying that we're ready to roll. I'm glad we were able to puzzle through and find a nice, um, a good solution to working with the homeschool families. We have plenty of time to do so. That's in line with what we've been talking about all along. So thank you for being a reminder on that. That's, it's really helpful. And Sarah, call on the, uh, the trimester change.
It all, it all works out.
Do we need to make a specific calendar change for that? Or that's, doesn't matter because it's asynchronous?
We don't need a calendar change.
Okay.
It's just, we'll notify those families because one day it's just K1.
Gotcha.
Okay. Is there any other school committee comment? Annie, did you have something you wanted to bring up?
How'd you know?
ESP?
Yeah, I dropped the ball and I, um, had wanted to, um, uh, adopt or adapt the theater arts, um, motion that, um, we had been sent from, uh, another district, uh, another school committee, uh, had, uh, wanted to send a, a message to the state saying, you know, you've done all this jumping through hoops for athletics. We would like this thing for theater arts. Um, and so I just want to keep harping on that because, um, you know, that is equally important to students as sports. So I promise that I will get my act together and I hope that the next meeting, it's, it's a moot point because the state has actually taken some action. But if Pam, if you have any information about where that stands, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah. None at this point, but I know Trish is our best source on that, so I will check in, um, on 32. Craig will be here to talk about, um, the coalition work that's been going on. Julie's going to brief us on the K12 anti-racism and equity work that's been going on. So uh, and I have a feel, I can ask Trish to be here too, to speak to some of the extracurricular activities.
Great. And I just want to thank you for, um, having the budget discussion was, you know, was very fraught last week, but this was such a great meeting to hear about education and have some really positive things to, to roll out to parents and families. So thank you for that. And thanks to all the staff who did all the work there.
Any other school committee comment? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon?
I think Annie wants to stay all night. Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, everybody.